Thank you so much, Sarah. Would you like to join me for the pledge, please?
Why is it so familiar?
America, sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Can I get a roll call, please? Mrs. Angela Steele.
Here.
Ms. Liskney.
Here.
Ms. Martindale.
Here.
Mrs. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Bosso. Uh, here. I do have one item to add to fiscal, um, agenda to about, um, it would be item number ten, approval of students deemed impractical to transport. Can I get a motion to approve that amendment, please?
Motion, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Second. Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Roll call. Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. Mrs. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskney.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Uh, yes. All right. Moving on now, we've got, um, approval of the minutes. Oh, sorry. Adoption of the agenda as amended. Can I get a motion to approve it as amended? Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Second.
Second, Angela Steele.
Thank you so much. Roll call. Ms. Martindale. Mrs. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskney.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Uh, yes. Uh, moving on now for approval of the minutes from the August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five regular school board meeting. Can I get a po- uh, a motion to approve that?
So, who, Liskney?
Thank you, Mrs. Liskney. Can I get a second? Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Any additions or, uh, additions to the, or corrections? Saying none? Roll call. Ms. Liskney.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. Mrs. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Uh, yes. All right. Tonight, we do have one presentation, board presentation goal updates on safety and human resources. Pleasure.
Thank you. It's my magnetic personality, Mark. Um, good evening, President Bosso, Vice President Angela Steele, Mrs. Liskney, Mrs. Martindale, Mrs. Peterson, Mr. Banks, and Mr. Garcey. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. In February, as a result of our board visioning session, we identified six priorities for focus within our district. Tonight, we will provide a second update on the action steps and project management of the foremost priorities of safety and human resources. So, these are the priorities. We're gonna highlight safety first, and then Mr. Jordan is going to give an update on the action steps on our human resources. I look forward to you, the three Cs that we're talking about when we think about safety, clarity, consistency, and calibration among our buildings. So, if you go to the next slide near there, um, all of this would be effect size of hopefully maintaining a thriving learning environment for our students. So, you'll see that theme throughout each one of those board action steps and, uh, goal priorities. So, first, an update. We spent the entirety of, uh, one day of our leadership retreat, um, on the safety trainings and year-long protocols that each of our buildings will actualize throughout the year. That link, and you're welcome to look through that, and gives you a very granular, um, idea of what the scope and sequence of our safety protocols look like in the training they're in. New this year, under our public school works week, uh, we have twenty-four months to implement, um, a district-wide epilepsy training protocol that is certificated, so you will, um, take that, and then you receive a certificate that is good. There are also, um, forms that will help us with seizure action plans for our students. So, those are underway now, um, and that certification, we believe, will be good for two years, and then when renewals, we'll have a, our pressure course over two years. Additionally, through the opening, opening of schools, safety meetings that we are hosting at the buildings, principals, um, facilities, as well as district administration are conducting walkthroughs and drill reviews, um, during the staff opening meetings, we're conducting our tabletop exercises, um, Mr. Sabres this year, as well as Pat Shaw, who I'm gonna introduce later. Um, we do those in collaboration with Grove City Police Department, as well as Franklin County Sheriff's Office. Excellent. Um, want to highlight just a few things. So, as you know, um, we've worked very hard to increase the collaboration between our local law enforcement entities, and a critical piece of that are our therapy dog programs. Um, this year, obviously, we have Bo, who will be at Central Crossing with Officer Shaw. Um, we have Luna, who, um, is in her first, kind of her second year of training, but first full year at Franklin Heights High School, and we will also welcome Coda. So, um, just some pictures there. Additionally, I'm very excited to share that we're, um, expanding our SRO resource at the middle school through the Franklin County Sheriff's Office. So, they've been very helpful as we partnered with them. At no cost to the district, we have an additional resource officer that will support Norton, Finland, and Pleasantview Middle Schools. So, that's gonna be great for those buildings in terms of safety and security. And as we talk about the overall proactive collaboration, as we talk about the therapy dog program, I wanted to give you just a few statistics. Um, so, obviously, we're saying goodbye to Officer Petty, and we're welcoming Joe Hughes as the new SRO at Grove City. But just some quick data, um, classroom visits, uh, for staff and office visits were three times that. Just general visits to the office were fifteen hundred and fifteen. Had some, uh, emotional support visits, twenty-six of those, and our dogs attend, um, passport ceremonies, graduations, and they were actually invited to graduation parties for students. Um, additionally, when we look at the Franklin County Sheriff's Office, um, as we look at fifty reports were filed, fifty-three were taken, and then one thousand eight therapeutic interactions with students. And we'll still be gathering the data on Luna because, again, she was in training last year. Um, and then the last piece I wanna highlight, obviously, the digital safety priority has been a big part of our work with digital wellness and self-regulation with the use of technology. Uh, but on September, September twelfth, we're going to have a district-wide, um, safety day where we will implement scenarios that are developmentally appropriate for each of our grade-level bands, and the buildings will be actualizing those drills and trainings on that day. Um, and then principals will be working with staff to give, um, feedback regarding what went well, what we can improve, um, and any additional supports that we might need. So, at this time, I'm actually gonna bring up our guest of honor, if I might. And if I could just tell you a quick story. So, when I first met Bo, one of my favorite children's books is called Madeline Finn and the Library Dog. And the library dog looks just like Bo except her name is Bonnie. So, when all this worked through, and I was able to, um, see Pat, and then Bo was on campus, I gave him that book, and I think you read it, and then you now found another book that's actually in the same series, right? Right, okay. So, this is not Bonnie, but this is Bo. So, any questions from Officer Shaw while he's here, because he's just been a tremendous resource to our students and our staff? Yes, Miss Liskney. So, happy that you're here. Lovely to see Bo, of course, as always. Um, I'm wondering, Officer Shaw, if you could just give us a little synopsis or a little bit more information about your interactions with the students since having Bo in the building.
So, my interactions with, uh, students have went probably tenfold than I normally have, and my discipline that I had to deal with probably dropped fifty percent over the six months, um, that I had to, oh, for January to the end of school year this year versus last year. It's amazing what he, he does, things that I cannot do. Um, it doesn't matter what race you are, he loves everyone in the club, and my school is very diverse, and even those who say they don't like dogs, that love every day. So, I get to have great conversations and with kids, and they trust me, and because of that, I've built way more relationships than, like, uh, like, uh, like Luscher said about. We went to ten grad parties this year. I didn't go to any in the last set. Yeah, it was expensive, but it was worth it. And I, first of all, I, I really wanna say thank you. You guys don't realize what you've done just for Grove City. So, because of you allowing us this opportunity and partnership, I've reached thousands of our community members beside your, I mean, hospital business and memory care business, which we would never would have been able to do without this partnership. So, even though this is a school issue, uh, you have reached out into the community hugely, um, as social media campaigns are huge, as you see me. We started the, uh, Love Like Bo campaign, and those are on the backside of there is window clings for kids' cars, so we're gonna start that this fall. It's teaching kids about love your neighbors and self over ser- uh, service over self, and be your best, and change your world. Those things are kids need, uh, other than just academics, and, uh, Bo's gonna lead the charge for that. I can't even tell you, I get visits from class, the teachers come down, and they put a smile on their face and say, I had a bad day. You don't realize when you change a teacher's momentum in the morning, how many kids that infect? You know, they, they, they have bad days too, we're all human, and if they had a bad day at home, and they have to still come to work because it's their responsibility, but you can make that better in the first part of the day, then you just affected all those kids for the day. And so, that's, it's, it's huge what, what they're doing.
I'm just glad to see the therapy dog, um, I call it incentive program, is what I feel like it is, how it, it grown from this board's advocacy, starting with Matisse, and then making it expand out, so. Yay, 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 I'm not gonna cry, but this is, it's exciting to see that it did, um, become very successful for the district. Um, and I am grateful that our district is in a position that we are able to add additional SROs, keep the ones we have, have the therapy dog programs in, because there is some school districts that is not this lucky to have this opportunity, so. Thank you.
And the, when you have a kid come in your office, and a lot of people don't, our rule is SRO, it's, it's, it, especially at Central, I have three different police jurisdictions, so it grows tremendously, things that kids have bad times at home, and, and they come in and crying, and, and they come and spend ten minutes with Bo, and they're back to class. So, education time goes up as they interact, instead of sitting at the counselor's office and bothering them for an hour over just something, and they can't do their job. It, it's, it's a huge waterfall effect of what it does for all staff, not just me.
I think some people don't realize that you do keep record, so any, every interaction, all of those kinds of things, it's not something that we're just willy-nilly. It's, you do have to keep track of all of those instances.
So, I have myself wrenching, uh, every day that I enter notes and stats, and then I, they add up at the end here, those are the, the stats that Dr. Luscher left, left, you know, so those are accurate. Um, but it, and it also, it doesn't include all my community visits and other schools, and I'm very fortunate to work with a great leader, Mr. Fairs, who allows me to go to other elementary schools or whatever for a period and interact with them as well, so it's not just Central Crossing, so it's, uh, I've been fortunately good Richard and and a few other schools, Eighth Interme, uh, I'm planning on, I go to the Greek Academy, so if you don't know, I also cover the Greek Academy, so Bo goes and visits there, and, uh, I'll be on the whole issue as well. For me, it's just not just Central, I'm interviewing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, now, we're gonna transition to Mr. Jordan, who's going to give an update on human resources.
Thank you, Dr. Luscher, Mr. Bosso, Angela Steele, members of the board, Mr. Banks, Mr. Garcey. Out of privilege of working with Bo on Saturday, uh, we had the Grove City kickoff on Saturday, and Bo, that's over here. Bo had the biggest line. Ninety million degrees outside, and Bo's got him backed up. The thing about Bo, Bo had a fan on him the whole time, he had access to the air-conditioned car whenever he wanted. That's pretty sweet, that's pretty sweet. Well, I'm happy to stand up for you tonight and talk about our goals and human resources, which, of course, were about recruitment, data, and then, uh, onboarding specifically when it came to classified employees. So, walking through a lot of stats this evening, um, some programs or, I'd say, projects in the run for this year's school year, and see how they come to fruition for us by the end. So, a lot of numbers are gonna come at you, and, and that's okay, but I think that kinda tells your story of human resources and things that we're doing right now. So, one of the things that we looked at last year, if you remember, we started at this point last year, we had about a total of nineteen or so exit surveys provided to us by our staff who left the district, whether they retired or whether they resigned. So, we said right off the bat, how can we increase that? We looked at it, we can put in an email, and again, these, these numbers aren't great. So, when I give you the numbers of people who retired and resigned this year, it's still not where we wanna be, always room to improve. So, ninety total respondents, as you can see on the board, uh, forty from the certified side, that's only about thirty percent of those who actually retired or who resigned. So, total retirements and resignations on the certified side was a hundred and thirty-three, forty-one retirees and ninety-two resignations. So, you only saw, uh, forty respondents to that, so we've gotta continue to do better, but out of those respondents, those forty folks, this is the data from those forty folks. So, yes, you can hypothesize all kinds of other reasons that might be out the way people left us, but this is your sample size that you have. And this is the things that I decided I'm gonna keep the top four things that we see, and that's, that's what is reported there. And then you go to the fifth respondent from the classified side, of which we had a hundred and thirty-four classified members leave our team this year because of retirement and resignation. Thirty-six of those are retirements, ninety-eight of those are resignations. And again, you only see thirty-seven percent, basically, who responded out of that group, and here's what those were. Okay, on the admin side, I threw their numbers into the certificated, and I'll take, we also have times where people come and meet with me directly as opposed to filling out the survey, and I have those anecdotal notes that I have, where people wanted to meet with me and whenever I just came to set, and they have that option. When I do the exit survey to come in with me directly to talk about whatever it is they wanna talk about, share their thoughts and feelings. But we had four administrative retirements and eight resignations this year. I know we've talked about that in the meetings, this is what, what people do and why they go. Um, I wanna show you the hiring part of this. So, obviously, it's a huge task, and Lori Baylike on the certified side, this does an amazing job there. So, we posted, uh, two-hundred-and-sixteen jobs, versus two-hundred-and-fifteen of those we filled, and we consolidated that last one. Um, new, so we had a hundred and thirty-three new hires this year alone, out of a hundred and thirty-three. Sixty-seven were brand-new teachers, brand spanking new to the field. And there we had sixty-six ranging from one year of experience to over twelve years, we had a couple people who had left the district, and might just be a contract and actually come back to the district. So, they went somewhere else, and said, yeah, I'm gonna come back to Southwestern, I liked it, and they came back, and that's why it says up to step twelve, with twelve years of experience. So, I feel pretty good anytime I can see that we're taking sixty-six people from other places, I get pretty excited about that, so. Uh, so, there's that one. Administratively, I plan on hiring before July tenth, if you remember, we came in here, um, last school year, we're still hiring folks, administrative side after July tenth. So, it was good, and actually, it wasn't like a goal we all talked about, but something that we wanted to make sure we knocked out before July tenth, we were able to do that. So, we brought in two, ten new administrators to Southwestern State Schools, we promoted four teachers into, into administrative, administration. Then we had three internal movements within the district, uh, with one of our assistants becoming the head principal of the middle school, Katie Fraser, even at the last board meeting. Classified side, and we've talked about this before, a classified, it rotates, and those class members who are here, they know, I see clogs, it's just a rotating door, various reasons. Various reasons there. We had a hundred and sixty-one new hires across all classifications, and I'm not gonna read all the numbers to you, but I just, I put them on here so you can see what that looks like from a numbers perspective, of the people who, you know, they leave, the new hires we get, people who left us and come back, and people within, through language, can actually change a position. And we always say as one of our greatest recruiting tools, I believe, in Southwestern, besides our diversity and our size, all the things we have, is the fact that here, because we are so large, there's plenty of room for people to go ahead and be promoted to different positions or change jobs, 'cause I've been doing this four or five years, I wanna, I wanna try something new. So, it's one of the great things that we have here, and I wanna make sure you can see those numbers on there. We put the scanning on there, and I know that I just saw Mr. Bosso there on, on Saturday at the Grove City kickoff piece, but we had this QR code on our table, and I was telling Matt, we had about fifteen people come up to our table, and we were handing out stuff for kids going back to school, but we often do the HR, the, hey, and for the district. And so, we have people scanning in, and we use this QR code for folks, instead of going right to the application process, airplanes take them off. So, instead of, uh, going to the application process, they can scan this Google Doc, and it allows Matt and this team to reach out to them, 'cause maybe they were unable to find their application, or it was too difficult, they just wanna have a conversation, see what's available, then the things go, well, I'll walk them through the process and get on board. That's been a huge help, particularly with transportation and all of the classifications. So, again, we're still hiring and hiring all the time, and that's the QR codes on there for. Uh, if you go down to data collection, the next slide, ongoing, okay? So, one of the things, and Evan will have a video level release, Evan and his team interviewed a lot of our new teachers, a new teacher orientation, why Southwestern City Schools. He did it last year, it was wonderful, he did it again this year, it's not ready to be uploaded yet, but he did all that. We're also gonna piggyback off of that, and we're gonna create a survey and hit them, um, early, well, probably like September, October-ish. And again, hey, why are you here, uh, some of the things you like, what do we miss? What are some things that we might have missed that you wanna tell us about, that we need to improve? What was your experience like, now that you're here, thought about a little bit? So, we'll be doing that, surveys will work. And then we've talked about state surveys before as well, we have it created, and what that's gonna look like, uh, you know, we'll be targeting people who've been here for a while in the buildings, talking to administrators, give us five, seven folks, been in your building for a while, we'll send this to them, hopefully they'll fill it out and say, why'd you stay here? Okay, why are you here? I, I know why I came back, but why are you here? All right, and one of the things we're gonna be doing. And then you go to recruitment, which is our number-one thing, and that never stops. Again, that, this never stops for us, this is very similar to the last time we talked, where we set up for all the college fairs that have gone up this fall, into the spring. We, you know, we did a cook hiring here, that had a lot of success with that, we're doing those again this year. I've just reached out, this is laughing, I think I'll forgive us, I was probably telling Lori and Matt today that, A, you know, we've been inviting a sweep to Ohio State again, which I don't do on that. And again, we get kids, you build those relationships, they wanna come work here and be here. So, all those things are going on, we will report out to you again at our next session, um, hopefully I'll have some state survey information for you and other items. The last thing was the onboarding of classified, and I don't have it on as far as the slides, but the onboarding of classified. We were able to purchase a product called three-two-one insight, which we use, which has three planned, uh, modules, you would like to say modules, that we are actually using with our educational aides, that they're actually now using, um, when they get hired by us. The walks to, you know, boundaries, uh, the escalation techniques, things of that nature, that's all done on there for our folks. And yet, to come, and we're probably gonna be goals, we're really looking at the substitute teacher onboarding, because we're going to have only the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh school year, but that's a project within itself, so. So, open for any questions?
I'm glad to see the surveys. I think I was the one pushing the surveys.
Uh, we didn't talk about that, ever.
You know, matter how small the, uh, response back, it's something to start with. That's why I always say, we'll take, if it's one, we take one, if it's more, we take more, but it's always a start, so I'm glad to see those being, being done.
It's anonymous, right? Seven people meet with me, but I keep that between me and them, but it's anonymous, we want your feedback. I wanna get better on this feedback. Okay?
I love your excitement. Great, and, and thank you to you and your team. You've done a lot of hard work this year, and you've got it set up for a great start to the school year, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Lori and Matt do a great job. Actually, started gross repair back because.
Is there a phone on? Can you hear someone? I can't hear myself, however, no, thank you, is there another one, Mr. Dean, right, presenting two, or? Okay, your name was on the list, he's definitely double-checking. No, thank you, guys, um, Luscher and Shaw and Jordan for that. It's really, really cool to sit here and see all of the things we've been talking about for well over a year now, come to Porshin. Um, you know, we really wanted to have Bo set and see him come to Porshin and follow up with everything, you know, that's part of what we've been talking about. Therapy dogs, you know, January eighth was my very first meeting last year, and the therapy dogs came up, and from that moment, it's been, hey, let's do it. And then Luscher started before we got here, so we're really excited to, to see it happen, it's so exciting. And my kids know who Bo is, you know, everything knows Bo, it's the funniest thing, I'm like, oh, you, oh, no, not, not us, okay, just Bo. I'm sure you're used to it by now, but it's really fun. Um, and with the HR perspective, I mean, a year ago, you just want Bo in here for a year, right? About a little over a year. This is really cool to see, so it's, it's exciting seeing things come to Porshin and all the progress we made, so excited for the future. Thanks, guys.
Anybody else? All right, we're gonna move on, we've got some other participation related to agenda items. We have two, uh, Christine, um, they're catch. The Janes?
Chant.
Chants, sorry.
Hello. Good evening, members of the board, my name is Christine Chants, I'm the parent of two children who attend St. Christopher Catholic School, previously known as Trinity. I'm here to speak about the district's decision to declare transportation for our school impractical. While I was in the statement, I was asked to read to the board by parents who were unable to attend this meeting tonight, and afterwards, I'll add some of my own insights. Do you have a payment in lieu amount might just be a number in a budget column, and to our families, this decision changes our lives. It changes how we get our children to school safely, and changes the time we have with them in the morning and after school. It changes their opportunity to learn and participate equally with other students in the district. We are parents working hard, paying taxes, and doing everything we can to give our kids the best education possible. Our children deserve the same opportunities every other student in this district to have safe, reliable transportation to school. The transportation department's decisions are not just inconveniences, they are disruptions that ripple through our work schedules, our finances, and our children's education. This pattern continues, it will harm the district's reputation and operations as badly as we've seen happen in Palm City Schools. Please remember, this isn't just about saving money, about doing what is right and fair for all students, no matter what school they attend. The law is clear that these decisions must be individualized, yet we have seen blanket determinations that do not meet that, that statement. We are here asking you to follow the law of restore transportation and show that every child matters equally to, in Southwestern City Schools. Um, from my own insights, this whole process for requesting the transportation has been sketchy at this. Even just tonight, adding the impractic- impracticality into the agenda at the last minute, potentially denying those effective a chance to come here and speak. Starting, um, around April eighteenth, I received an email from an unknown email address with paper forms to fill out regarding the transportation requests from Southwestern City Schools, um, for the new school year. Many parents denied receiving this email or eventually found it in their spam folder, and nothing came from St. Christopher, and deadline for the forms made first. Around May thirtieth, a few parents received letters stating their students were deemed impractical to transport. The letter was dated for July first, which is still a month away. A dollar amount for pay-in lieu transportation was given, and the deadline to accept the pay-in lieu was set for two weeks. There's no detailed explanation for why the students were deemed impractical, just that they considered many different, um, items. A parent had tried to call the transportation department to question this, was not able to get any information because the person responsible was on vacation until June twentieth, which is after when the contract was due. At this point, the principal of St. Christopher was made aware and stated that she had no knowledge of this and had not received any communication from, um, Southwest City School District related to requesting transportation for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. On June thirteenth, a principal emailed everyone with another form to request transportation, was stated request due by July first now. Many St. Christopher parents received a generic letter dated July eleventh, which declared the children impractical to transport for, and I quote, "one or all of the following reasons: time and distance, cost, and/or the number of students attending the school in which you are enrolled." There's no specific amount stated in the letter or contract that the Southwest City School District will pay to the parents for the payment in lieu of transportation. It was just stated, and I quote, again, "an amount which shall not exceed the state average cost to transport all students in the state proceeding here." They reportedly could pay me five dollars at the end of the year, and it would be without a contract if I signed it. So, I rejected it, obviously. Um, but there's nowhere on the letter or contract to even reject the payment in lieu of transportation, um, and to request mediation. And there's no communication, um, from Southwest Transportation stating that mediation was even an option. The letter seemed like a scare tactic, it was only the option to sign the contract, get some amount of money, or don't sign it and get nothing. The scare tactic did work for some parents, and they signed the contract not knowing there was another option. Our parents were a, and the principal of our school, and the rep of the diocese, was only able to meet after the deadline for the contract was due. And after being educated that there was another option, some parents tried to stall their contract, and was told that they were not able to do so. On July sixteenth, a parent reported that they were told only six families signed up for transportation, but in a poll that we did that, that night, at least ten families stated that they signed up for transportation, and many had more than just one child. This whole process seems disorganized, dishonest, and unlawful. And my answer is this, why all students living in Southwest City School District and going to St. Christopher were deemed impractical? I also like to know if there are any other transportation methods that were considered, for example, using like two nine-passenger vans instead of one bus to cover the distance of bus route. And we'll say that, I just received something in the last hour from the transportation stating that the reason, like, more information about the reasons he stated is because it costs five thousand, like, six hundred dollars per student, so I think we haven't gotten very much information at all. I feel like everything's been disorganized, like, with multiple different ways to, you know, request transportation, um, and lack of communication, and a lot of different, things that we get from, from the usual partner, so.
Thank you, Christine. Our speaker is Emily Woolcox.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Emily.
My name is Emily Woolcox. I'm a parent of a child who attends the St. Christopher School in the Grandview area. We are residents of the Southwestern School District, and I am here to speak about the district's decision to declare transportation to South, to St. Christopher as impractical. My family has been utilizing the Southwestern School buses for years now, since we moved into the district in two thousand and twenty-two. My husband and I are both full-time, day shift employees and pay our taxes. In June, I submitted the request for transportation for my daughter for this upcoming fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, and received confirmation of receipt almost immediately. In mid-July, myself and many other parents started receiving letters indicating our children are suddenly deemed impractical to transport to school, providing a blanket potential reason for either time and distance, cost, and/or the number of students residing. In this same letter, we were offered the payment and loan for transportation, stu- for transporting our students, excuse me, ourselves, instead of through Southwestern City buses. The amount offered was unspecified and without direct reasoning for the change in this district policy. Just to put this in perspective, my family alone lives less than four miles north of the Southwestern City School Bus Transportation Center, which is only twelve miles from the school of attendance of St. Christopher. At this point in time, mid-July, school is due to begin in one month, and families are expected to make a major change to their work schedule and other family requirements with very little notice. This would clearly be difficult for any professional, working adult, with a typical and required work responsibility. These mandated changes can ultimately risk one's employment being severed, and the risk of our ability as guardians to provide for our family financially. In my personal experience, more often than not, these unexpected changes in our student's school providers have direct and negative impact on their academic and mental well-being. What the district has proposed sounds like a setup to fail our children educationally and create behavioral needs for them in their future. Whatever the ideal amount the district is trying to reduce for the overall budget, it should not come at the expense of a few students in private or non-public schools who ride and rely on the Southwestern City School buses. It shouldn't matter if Southwestern City is providing one bus or two to a particular non-public or private school. Southwestern City School District is a very large school district, and should not risk any of its local students the future of the overall, for the overall cost of one bus or one employee to transport students to a singular school. Although the district proceeds funding per pupil from the state, each pupil within the district should be treated equally, with the same resources provided to others in the same district. Please remember, these students will be affected. They are young and questionable, and any major change to their lives can have a negative effect on them personally, educationally, and ethically. It isn't just about saving money, it's about doing what's right and fair for all of our students, no matter what school they attend. The law is quite clear that these decisions regarding transportation must be individualized, yet we, to this point, have only been provided a blanket determination that does not meet the highest standards. Myself and many other families of St. Christopher are asking you to follow the law, restore transportation to our students, and show that every child matters equally within Southwestern City School District. I thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
We're gonna move on now to board reports. If we go down to the leases after that.
Yeah, I was gonna go ahead and start with her. We had, uh, in our visiting session back in February, those desire to create, uh, district kinds advisory board. At the July tenth meeting, we had some conversation about that advisory board. I brought forth a few ideas on the creation of it. The, how it'd be created, who would serve on it. And I just wanted to follow up, uh, I said it would come back at a later board meeting, this is that board meeting. Kind of finalize some of the, uh, things that we discussed at the July tenth meeting. I just, I felt like this is where the direction I got, so I just wanted to confirm that and move forward of getting this, uh, started. So, uh, at that meeting, it was like, I, I said, I thought it'd be a good idea to have, we all have been talking about this, and we talked about some ideas together, and we brought those to you, and we're gonna try to just, uh, formalize those. So, the board member that's responsible for the fiscal operational management items, we, we feel should be a part of that committee. Uh, we think that the treasurer should be the vice chair, uh, the board member would be the chair of that committee, that's the fiscal operational management person. Uh, legally, the two other, um, another board member should serve, so it'd be two total board members. And the board president would appoint that. Um, talk to the other board members and see what they'd like to do with the board president, appoint that. Uh, we feel that up to four community members could serve, hopefully one from every attendance area, uh, depending on who shows interest, uh, that was a good idea. Let's, let's start with those items that I just discussed right there, is everybody okay with those items as this statement so far? Okay, good. What we thought is how we'd get those, let's talk about how we would get those community members, there was some discussion about that the last time, but, uh, what I heard from the group, um, is to have open, uh, have community members, we'll put something on our website, we'll put something also out on social media to ask for and solicit interest in this. Uh, so people would turn in some sort of, uh, resume and reasons why they would like to serve on this committee. They would be open to anybody to, to fill us out there, would be, I talked about it first, that maybe have some requirements for them to have a financial background or whatnot, but maybe it's just good to have anybody, uh, at first, uh, to see who's interested at first, so. We don't wanna, uh, rule people out, so, everybody good with having this an open interview, open, uh, resume process? We thought if we get an abundance of those, we would screen those, the, the two of us would, the, myself and the two board members would screen those. So, it's possible that not everybody would be interviewed, but, uh, we do a screening process. If there's too many, if it's, obviously if it's, if it's not too many of them, we would go ahead and interview all of them. Everybody good with that? Uh, length of committee, um, two years length on, on a committee member, uh, from the community, they could also, you know, re, re-up this, uh, we don't have a, you know, term limit on this, I don't think, if, if there's, if there's not interest, it'd be good to have, uh, some people to stick on a little longer, but I thought, a two-year term would be good, that way people kind of know what they're getting themselves into, they can make a decision to apply again every two years. Does that, does that sound like a pretty good, I believe so too? The amount of meetings, uh, first off, we'd like to start with two standard meetings, it's probably gonna be more that when we get ramped up, because we're gonna need to really kind of sit down with some people and talk through the financial, um, pretty, pretty much the financial roadmap that we have right now, so that might take more than just two standard meetings a year, so we'll probably ramp that up a little bit. But the two standard meetings that we would have, was one before the fall forecast, which happens now in October, and then the, used to be the spring forecast, now the winter forecast, which is in February. So, the one in the fall, we talk about the forecast and assumptions, and the update on the, the financial audit that's going on. And the one in the winter, uh, the fore, the audit would be wrapped up by then, we'd talk about the final product of the audit, and also discuss the, the forecast and assumption updates would be done at that time. That's also, February is a good time of the year where we're putting our budgets together for the next fiscal year, so we could also talk about those things. We thought those two standard meetings, those, those would be the ones we would have set, we would have pretty firm agendas on those, that those are the things that we would talk about. And I'll be with, with those. Okay. Uh, we would have other meetings as things arose, uh, we talked about, I, I kind of pointed out four things that I thought would be good. Meetings that if we had to bring this group together, if we had any significant audit issues, any levy considerations, any debt issuances, either for construction or refinancing, and, uh, when we're going through, um, any major salary or benefit changes, we could talk about that as well. The structure of the meetings, we feel that agendas should be out before, a week before, and materials out a week before the meeting was to occur. Uh, does that sound like a good timeline to have that out, or do you think that needs to be a little longer? I think, yeah, week, week is good. Uh, minutes will be taken and available, uh, for review, and the time of the, the time in the meeting, uh, we're not, we're not gonna set a date like it's gonna always be on a Wednesday at this time. Uh, we'll, we'll wait till the committee is, is put together, and then as a group, kind of commonly decide what would work best for that group, because that, that good time, that could change as we move along. That sounds good. All right. Last but not least, we need a timeline of when all this is gonna happen, so, I believe that we could get this, uh, applications, have information put out on our webpage, social media, and ask for, uh, community members, remember this is community, uh, focus, so these will be residents of our community, to submit applications by September twelfth, uh, twenty twenty-five. We could screen those applicants, the, the group, uh, that we have here, after, uh, Mr. Bosso appoints another member. We could screen those applicants, do interviews the week of September fifteenth through the nineteenth, and we can have our first meeting the week of Sept-, uh, October sixth through tenth. That sound pretty good? All right, and as a result of this group, we'll put together some, when the group gets together, we're, we can, you know, kind of formalize this in some high laws that we all agree to. We'll have those signed off, obviously, the board will have access to those, be able to see those, but, I'm really excited about this, this is another thing that we've talked about, another goal that we're moving forward with, and, and, uh, getting some legs under this, it's gonna be a good, uh, I think it's gonna be a good tool for our district. Camille, do you want anything else on there?
You did it, you got it.
All right, thanks.
I'm just saying, if someone did step up, like, February, you're not, not happening.
All right, we're gonna go right back to Camille, for items for action under this.
I don't know, I, yeah, I have legislative update. Yes, let me go back to those. Yes, let me give a quick, um, okay. Um, legislative updates, following Duane's cuts and veto's in the operating budget, let me give a next, some information on that, there are about seven items that were key because related to education. So I'm gonna skip over those and fill in any questions, um, actually, our cycle has more info than I do on some of these, but, um, all has lingered. Uh, about seven items, um, for example, item point seven, non-chartered, non-charter educational savings account program, educational tax credits, that was vetoed. Um, item number fifty-one, the STRS and SERS employee contributions. School boards often negotiate contracts with school district leaders based on local needs and talent competition, permitting certain supplemental benefits, the limited ability of local school districts to offer competitive compensation packages to attract or retain experienced school leaders. And those came over asleep for us. Therefore, a veto of this item was in public's best interest, according to Duane. Um, item fifty-three, the partisan school board candidate elections. Item fifty-five, county budget commission authority and procedure, that was a partial veto. Item number sixty-three, um, the forty percent cash carryover. While the intention to save taxpayer dollars is understandable, this item would significantly limit the number of funding that school districts will carry over year to year, resulting in more districts asking taxpayers to pass levies more often, which could very well exacerbate property tax increases instead of reducing them. While seeking to grow our taxpayer approval bodies is appropriate, this item is contrary to local control and will undermine efforts by school districts to manage their finances responsibly, and follow best business practices. Further, the increased levy cycle could cause more levy failure due to levy fatigue impacting overall financial stability of school districts. Therefore, a veto of this item was in public's best interest. Item sixty-five, the twenty mil floor calculation. This item would require that emergency and substitute tax levies, incremental growth levies, conversion levies, and property tax portion of combined income tax and property tax levies be included in the twenty mil floor calculation for school funding. The Duane Trust Administration recognizes the great need for property tax reform in Ohio, and they have already convened a working group that will include legislators, agency officials, school officials, community members, and property tax experts to ensure this critical topic is given attention to deserve. This item was also vetoed. Uh, and the last item was item sixty-six, the school district property tax restrictions. Now, the House has voted sixty-one twenty to override this one, um, so the House has overridden, um, item number sixty-six, which restricts political subdivisions, including school districts, from pursuing replacement of property tax levies, as well as pick some emergency, substitute emergency, and combine school district income tax and pick some property tax levies. This veto override now, an instance in the Senate for consideration. Now, it will need twenty votes in the Senate for this to override to be successful, and the Senate has not picked a date, as of my knowledge, to talk about these items. Now, with all of this being said, the lawmakers have until December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-six to close all this general assembly conversation, so, um, all of the, so we've done it, so it could be, um, we're over a year now, we're now all the vetoes that they, they decide to do with all of them, the ones overall. So, with all that being said, I also want to thank the current and future decision makers of Ohio. For a while, I know myself and others here have been reaching out through emails and meetings and conversations to bring attention to the critical needs of education in Ohio, and needs a lot to see that our voices are being heard. I'm grateful for the opportunity of a panel discussion this Wednesday, and earlier, to talk about the future of education funding. This would be a great chance to connect with people who are shaping legislation and policy in Ohio. I hope all board members are able to attend. I'm excited for the chance to talk and build relationships with our, with our district and our students for years to come. My hope is that these conversations are just the beginning, and that we can continue to be a part of the important dialogue across Ohio beyond, so it's pretty exciting stuff. If you guys aren't sure, but come Wednesday, it's, um, a really great meeting here in New York, global educators.
Thank you so much, any questions we can add? All right, we're gonna move on for items for action under fiscal operation management, if this is.
Okay. Before I dive into the financial, uh, report section, I want to take a moment to just be able to, um, respond to a statement that was just made tonight, um, from our two guests in relation to impractical to transport. Um, and so I felt it was important because I, I know the answer to one of them. I mean, I never want any, um, community member to feel like we have done anything intentional last minute. Um, so just to give the two speakers, um, some clarification, um, as far as why it was added to the agenda last minute, there was no intent for it to be added last minute. We had all intentions of actually having this item on our agenda under the fiscal report, um, actually weeks ago, because if you have noticed, since the time of us having meetings in July, we had a gap because we shipped and changed some of our, our board meetings, particularly for this one. Um, but there was an intent to have this item already on the agenda. It was just, um, a mistake and error of it being left out on the agenda. And during the time of the interview meeting, um, I mentioned, I think there is an item that we don't have. And during the time of the interview meeting, um, I mentioned, I think there is an item, listen, we don't have, that impractical to transport category. So I just wanted to clarify tonight, that was not intentionally done to make any sneaky, uh, ignore the, the topic, or discredit any community members feelings on that topic. Okay? So that's why we got it added. Okay, let's dive in. Uh, we have ten items that we are bringing forward. The first item to bring forward is revised temporary appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. You're gonna see X one. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the revised temporary appropriations. Item number two, investments and financial statements for July twenty twenty-five. You're gonna see X two and X three. It is recommended that in accordance with section one three five point one four of the Ohio Revised Code, the Board of Education approve July investments and cash position report for the month of July twenty twenty-five as submitted. Okay? Item number three, is payment of bills, you're gonna see X four. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve payment of bills according to the list of checks for the month of July for twenty twenty-five. Item number four is our donations. We receive, um, total donations of one thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-five cents. You're gonna see X five, and we continue to express our gratitude and appreciation to our continuous donors. Item number five, we're at authorize, authorization to pay bills in accordance with section five seven oh five and four one of the Ohio Revised Code, you're gonna see X six. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize the treasurer to pay bills for July, which were not processed in accordance with section five seven oh five point four one of the Ohio Revised Code. Item six, some of these are gonna start sounding familiar to you guys as I, I dive into them. The agreement with communities and schools. It is recommended that the Board of Education enter into an agreement with the communities and schools to provide one student housing stabilization care manager and sixteen site coordinators to secure and connect the school and or students with the needed resources and services to address the non-academic barriers negatively impacting student success for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year as presented. See X seven. Background around this one, the district has partnered with the communities and schools to provide this, uh, vital service to our at-risk population since the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. The district utilizes Title Ones to fund this, uh, provided service. So grateful that we're able to continue doing that. Item number seven, agreement with I Know I Can. It is recommended that the Board of Education enter into agreement with I Know I Can for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year as presented, see X eight. Background on this one is, the district has partnered with I Know I Can since twenty eighteen. I Know I Can provides services to reduce barriers entering college and the workforce for districts, uh, nine to twelve students. Some focal points are as follows. Teaching like time management skills, use of a planner to organize priorities, the SAT prep, explore extracurricular activities to stay engaged, uh, college and career planning workshops, your FASL and college application assistance, those are all things that are under I Know I Can. Okay? Number eight, agreement with directions for youth. It is recommended that the Board of Education enter into an agreement with directions for youth and families to provide assessments and individual service plans for students in the amount of sixty thousand for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, see X nine. The background on this one, the district has partnered with the direction for youth for many years. Directions for youth provides individualized service plans to students in need of behavioral health, health services. Item number nine, approval of bus stops. Bus stops for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution to approve the bus stops for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year as presented. You're gonna see X ten in executive content area. Okay? Um, the Ohio Department of Education's Ohio People Transportation Operation and Safety Rule states that the, uh, District's Board of Education, um, annually approves school bus stops. So that's background one on this, this is one thing we do, um, annually. The Southwestern City School, School District bus stops for the twenty twenty-five school year are completed. Okay? By the Board of Education, Southwestern City School District. Uh, the board delegates the director or business services and transportation supervisor to add, relocate, or delete bus stops as required for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. The list of stops are provided in the executive content area of the agenda due to safety and security reasons. So, um, it's listed, but here's a specific reason. Item number ten is the approval of students deemed impractical to transport. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the list of students deemed impractical to transport for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year as presented, see X eleven. Uh, again, in executive content area through the confidentiality of student information, that is where that's located, according to section thirty-two twenty-seven point oh one of the Ohio Revised Code. The average cost of transportation per child in the state of Ohio for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year will be determined by the State Department of Education and workforce. Background, we approved the original list at the May nineteenth meeting for the students that were aware. This list for additional students have been deemed impractical to transport. So we had an additional list that had came forward, and that is why there was an additional add to the list. After reviewing these items, I move them for passage.
There's, um, there needs to be a correction though, in this, on, um, item number ten. Um, according to section three two two seven dot oh one, there's not a section three two two dot seven oh one. I think it's just a typo, but, um, it looks like there's a three three two seven in Ohio law code. So I don't know if that added any confusion for anybody, but I got, so like, little confusion there. And it looks like on the July tenth, we also had a transportation lose, so we have one in May and in July. And it looks like in July, we also had this typo on the payment in the number three two two seven, even though there's not a three two two seven. So, I don't know. I mean, it's one of those things where I don't know what this does, so like, the conversation. But is this like, I mean, is this what? So we're still within the realm, just giving the little typo, it's all good, okay? Cause it is, once you go and see, you know, it's what he's been writing, so the three three's are with the education. Yeah, so there's no point oh one. So it's three three two seven, not three two two seven, all educational, um, Ohio law codes, so they're three three. Three two, I was like, there's a three two for bus transportation? Hold on a second, I don't wanna get the last one, but. So, that amendment is there, that helps, but. Alright.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second one for items? Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Your roll call. Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. Steve Losseal.
Yes.
Siski.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Uh, yes.
Moving on now to items for action, the personnel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alright, so for tonight's board meeting, we have seven personnel items involving one hundred and seventy-one persons. Uh, this includes three certificate of resignations, two administrative employments, three certified changes in employment, eighty-two certified employees, thirty-nine of which are supplemental, seventeen classified resignations, seventeen classified changes in employment, and forty-seven classified employees. Uh, and having reviewed these items, I move them for passage.
Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Can I get a second please?
Sorry, I'm listening. Listen, Cam.
Thank you, Mrs. Siski. Can I get your roll call please? Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Siski.
Yes.
Steve Losseal.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Uh, yes.
Alright, moving on now to public participation related to the agenda items. Our first speaker is Jennifer Marble.
Good evening. I'm here tonight as a parent who's followed recent parents closely. And someone who believes the words we use, especially in public meetings, send a message about how we view our community. At the July tenth board meeting, I know it's been a while, but this is the first public participation meeting since then. After the educators had ratified their contract, the media issued a statement thanking parents, students, neighbors, and local businesses for their support. That should be the kind of thing that brings people together. Instead, one board member called it a homing. Just to be clear, a homing means causing shock or disnay, or it. So apparently, begging people for caring about their schools is not horrific. It's high tech. Whether you agree with every tactic or not, this community was engaged. And it isn't that loving, it's parents and members who are involved and poured and invested, who support our educators. The people being taken on outsiders, hearing constituents dismissing their involvement or scolding an organization for appreciating them doesn't just come across as wrong there. It undermines trust, and when trust is gone, public starts questioning that, like, what do you say? Because you can't rebuild trust without truths, world outreach is more performance than principle. And let's be clear, public support is not a direct progress, it's the reason progress happens. Which brings me to another moment from the same meeting. A so-called success story comparing this district to Chipotle and McDonald's. The point we were told was that success isn't what you serve, but how. Aside from being an odd analogy for public education, the numbers behind you are wrong. In reality, McDonald's serves far more customers and generates far more revenue because it has more locations. In twenty twenty-four, McDonald's revenue was over fifty-three billion dollars. Chipotle's was less than half of that, but it's not a small detail that is obsolete for sure. When a board repeated the shared fault or misleading information, whether it's past the economics or the intentions of community members, it becomes difficult for the public to trust any minimal strength. Are numbers being changed to support a preferred narrative? Are facts being checked before they're shared here? If basic verifiable facts are wrong this time, what about things that aren't as easy for us, the public, to verify? Beyond that, why are we comparing schools to high school chains now? Our students are not customers of the drive-thru. Our educators are not servers asking what's up, do you like with your nuggets? Schools are not corporations, they are human institutions. Where long-term relationships and real support, financial, emotional, and structural matter. Finally, I'll say this. The word hysteria has been run round clearly to describe parents and educators who raise concerns or advocate for their schools. If calling for better learning conditions, safer classrooms, or fair treatment is considered hysterical, maybe it's worth asking who really feels threatened and why. Because from where I stand, whoever is sort of hysterical, they're paying attention, and they deserve better, and to be dismissed or disfaced by those institutions of power. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Moving on now, we have Joseph Harris.
Good evening, uh, my name is Joseph Harris, I'm a parent in this district. I only had a modest education in public speaking, but one thing I remember from my speech class I call mistake is that it was advised to begin your speech with a quote. Handel's Razor is an aphorism which states, and I'll paraphr- paraphrase for the sake of propriety, you should never attribute to bad intentions what can be adequately explained by ignorance. In essence, this means that you should generally assume a person's offensive or harmful behavior is a result of ignorance, misunderstanding, or incompetence, rather than a deliberate attempt to cause harm. It encourages people to avoid jumping to conclusions and to consider the most likely and charitable explanations. As a longtime reader, I'm a big fan of words, their history, etymology, and meanings. I'm also a big fan of learning about historical events. Um, this year during meetings of this board on May nineteenth, two ninth, and July tenth, and in various emails to concerned parents and even a response to a concerned student, I've been hearing a word used repeatedly that has specific historical origins and consequent connotations of which some members of the board may be unaware. I would like to eliminate the possibility of such ignorance as an explanation for any future use of this word. The word hysteria comes from the Greek hysteria, meaning uterus or womb. The concept originated with the Egyptians in around nineteen hundred B.C. as a condition afflicting only women that they called wandering womb. That caused them to behave irrationally. Around fifteen hundred years later, the ancient Greek physician Hippocrates named it hysteria, an affliction caused by the uterus. Around seven hundred years after that, around the beginning of the Dark Ages, Saint Augustine of Hippo's idea that sin was the source of all human suffering led to the popular belief that hysteria was a form of demonic possession. In the Victorian era, fathers, husbands, and brothers started institutionalizing misbehaving daughters, wives, and sisters who they were diagnosed with hysteria, locking them up where they couldn't cause any inconvenience. That was still going on until after my older siblings were born. Um, one extreme example, in nineteen forty-one, Rosemary Kennedy, the aunt of our current Secretary of Health and Human Services, was given a lobotomy because she was, according to her family, becoming increasingly irritable and difficult. After the lobotomy, she was reported to be more docile, um, but she was also rendered incapacitated and unable to speak intelligibly. She lived until two thousand and five. The term hysteria was removed from the American Psychiatric Association's Diagnostic and Statistic Manual of Mental Disorders, uh, DSM, in the third edition in nineteen eighty, and has rightfully been consigned to the dustbin of history by informed people. And as it was al- and as it always was and continues to be sexist, misogynistic, and predatory in nature. Since I love words, I thought I could pro- provide you with a few superior alternatives to choose from in the future when describing the inevitable outrage. Uh, there's tumult, panic, commotion, melodrama, pandemonium, and if you're feeling too tonic, there's my favorite, storm's dron. Uh, you capitalize the S and the D because they're nouns, and in German, you capitalize nouns. Um, these kids here who are, uh, rising freshmen at Westland are going to distribute to you my list of sources so you can do your own research if you choose. Uh, I had some space left on the paper, so I included the suggested alternative terms with their spellings so that you can use them in future emails and press releases if you so choose. Uh, wrapping up, I would like to refer back to the subject that began the recent use of the word. It's been a little more than two thousand five hundred hours since I asked one board member in an email that went unanswered to be more specific about what, what information, in his words, the NSBLC and the other politically, uh, aligned organizations could provide that would benefit the students of our district and their education. That's approximately one hundred and four days. Uh, if you had given any of the concerned members of the community a reasonable answer, perhaps all this storm is wrong, could have been avoided. I'm not sure that this behavior is what your constituents, the people living in your district whom you were elected to represent, expected when they were promised transparency during the twenty twenty-one Board of Education campaign. Uh, I also seem to remember that each one of us to, uh, conclude your address with a clear call to action. The line is, you should immediately issue an apology to the good people toward whom this insulting word was directed. It doesn't need to be elaborate, just sincere, we are all, we're constituents. Thank you for your time, and I hope I've given everyone something to consider.
Moving on now, we have, um, Jayden Quinones.
It's Chandler Friday. Um, I'm going to talk about professionalism today. Um, I probably won't get to all the examples of the lack of professionalism I can see from some members of the board, but I'm going to give it my all. So first, uh, Ms. Jane Losseal brought up the Hilliard Education Event. And probably most people in this room haven't heard about it. It's called the Future of Education in Ohio. An teaching event from Swami with, uh, Andrew Brenner, who is an education committee chair, Brian Stewart, who's a representative of the finance committee chair, uh, Dr. Todd Hoadley, which isn't that so funny because I know he's on the list for superintendents. I'm right. Um, and Omar Turazi, attorney. And underneath his name, it says Southwestern City School District. Then there's a Tara Myers, mom on a mission for school choice. And finally, we have Tony Antos, executive director for the Ohio Christian Education Network. This is sponsored by the Americans for Prosperity, which is a right-to-work organization, anti-union, and it is also, uh, sponsored by the, the Ohio Republican Party. So, my first question, which I asked in an email and no one answered, is who gave permission to Mr. Turazi to put that? And I would like an answer right now because we deserve one. Did anyone get a permission to do that?
I didn't.
I'm asking you if you gave, no, you didn't answer the question in the email, so I'm asking you again. For, for transparency purposes, we have a right to know who gave him permission to use our pride, our public school district to sit on a panel that is ours and that also features religious organizations and school choice organizations. It is not a fair amount panel. It is not meant to give a diversity of ideas, which is what some of you like to say for all the reasons you're joining far-right fringe hate groups that are not, uh, anything to do with diversity. I'm still, maybe by the end of my discussion, you could give us an answer because I think everyone in this room deserves it and would like to hear it. So I wrote the following email. I am writing to express serious concern regarding Omar Turazi's recent appearance. This is, by the way, a lawyer that makes nine thousand dollars a month for anything. He was not aware of Mr. Turazi. I'm writing to express serious concern regarding Omar Turazi's recent appearance in promotional materials, see attached. For upcoming political event, well-contracted to Southwestern City School District. Deeply problematic and inappropriate for a person under contract with the district to use that relation to elevate his political profile. That's what he's doing. We're allowing him to use our district to elevate his political profile. He has run for office multiple times. He is running for office again, and I believe, or maybe he's on his, he was promoted to the council, then he was a parish township, uh, finding fiscal officer. He has all kinds. He also, his family has church tools. It is a white horse at one. So he's really not putting public education at the forefront of his job here for the board. It's a serious ethical lapse and a significant reputational issue for the district. Mr. Turazi's contract should be terminated immediately. Unless he's given permission, this conduct is deeply troubling and contrary to the ethical standards expected of a public council, an elected official, and a member of the bar. If the board believes it really needs legal counsel, the process should follow the norms used by other districts such as Bigwona, where he also tried to get hired to be the school board lawyer. There's more enough to hire someone else. At least they went through the process. They listed the item on a public meeting for the agenda. Opening the role of applicant, sharing presentations in a public meeting for transparency, voting during the regular session in full compliance with the Ohio sunshine laws. They at least did that. On record, Mr. Turazi said no reason to hire him. It's similar to why Southwestern City Schools hired him. Because attorney-client privilege helps them discuss things outside of the public purview. Meaning you get around sunshine laws, or you violate them, but no one can prove it because everything, every single communication with him is considered attorney-tying privilege. It's not convenient. Mr. Bozo took a week and a day. I, I had to send another email. And then Mr. Bozo responded and said, "Chandra." Not very professional. "Sorry I haven't gotten back to you. I really don't understand the big concern with the title under Mr. Turazi's name." He is the legal counsel for the board, and I think this is a great opportunity to talk about school funding with the leaders of our state. That's all I have time for. Next slide, I'll talk about how you reconciled the Almory High School for safe space and how, for sure, that's not awful. And there's no rule that says.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Um.
Um, I do want to have a discussion, um, on the topic of the event and that Denise mentioned. Um, and that's because I am an active board member, sitting in an appointed seat. And I was on vacation and received the email, uh, from several community constituents with the flyer attached regarding this event. So we know we're all talking about the same event, okay? Just like myself as a board member, I would suspect as any other board member, you don't like to be caught off guard or blindsided. And that is a blind side. And my issue with the matter is there, if there was a discussion around Omar participating on this panel, Omar is an attorney. He is allowed to participate on any panel he elects to. But was there a discussion around the use of utilizing Southwestern City School District's name? If there was one, I was not a part of that discussion. If there was an approval that was done, I am not aware or familiar of it. And school boards are nonpartisan. Now, what I will say is Omar did send a email response or communication to the board to address and clarify any confusion. But I have to say, I wasn't that fond of the response on all of it. And I'm gonna tell you why. One, he says none of the individuals on the panel are representing their respective organizations. If that is true, then I don't understand why the titles of where their affiliations of work needed to be on this flyer. I'm going on what Omar Turazi's response to the board is. So, that is true, then they could have just listed their names. Now, the next was, he said, "The goal of the organizers was to bring together diverse professional perspectives for a constructive conversation, and I am honored that they asked for me to participate." Me, if we were having a discussion, this was not a diverse panel discussion, but again, he has the right to participate on any discussion panel he wants. But the use of Southwestern City Schools should not have been tagged to his title of his name. Because it appears as if he is representing Southwestern City Schools District. He is technically not an employee of Southwestern City School District. He is an employee of the board members who voted now to be appointed as the attorney. So it can't be misconstrued as he is speaking on behalf of Southwestern City Schools. And that we all agree with whatever it is that he states. The other thing in his comment or response to the board, this comment for law firms and lawyers to speak apart about important matters in education. The example that was given, Ricker Grayden regularly does presentations and workshops at VASA and is involved in panel discussions, even though it is known that they represent Southwestern City School District as well as many other districts. For the rights of Ricker and Grayden, I just want to acknowledge, he attached three links. I printed each one and I went over their advertisements. Ricker and Grayden has never, in their advertisement, when they are part of a panel, have mentioned that they are representing Southwestern City School District. They do not use their, our school district's name or any contract that they are affiliated to represent any other school district out there on their name in their titles and in their description, descriptions. They just say Ricker and Grayden, their name of their firm. If Omar had just said Omar Turazi, Turazi LLC, I don't know. His firm? I probably would not have a problem here because again, he has the right to participate where he chooses. But when you are tagging Southwestern City School District's name to it, a discussion should be had. Because that's a blind side, and that is not fair. There is a difference. And far as, you know, he said, "I believe that such a panel discussion is critical for important conversations." Important conversations would be us as board members having a discussion about this. So my question is, because again, I'm sitting in a current active seat that have a right to ask because I returned upon vacation to something I was not expecting to have to give answers to. Was anyone aware that he will be sitting on this panel and using the school district's name? And why did we not have a discussion behind it?
I myself, when I seen it, I didn't pay attention to put Southwestern City Schools. At the same time, I looked at it as an opportunity to, there are plenty of the many lawmakers that have power in our state house now along the chances are a future government is way out of that. I just looked at it as an opportunity to have a year of advocacy.
We have to keep in mind that when individuals are participating on a panel and they put their title, yes, you may say that they are not representing as that perspective like Todd Hoadley, the superintendent. But they put very strong, so it can be perceived by any person in the community that what he said that tolls career technical center agrees with what the statement is that he hates because his title is one there. That makes a difference, especially if there is no context to back it. If there was a discussion and I have community members asking me if I'm aware, do we agree, did we have a discussion, X, Y, or Z? And let's say I did, then I would have had an opportunity to explain why I agree and why I supported the name being used. But I can't say that. I can't say that here. Because there was no discussion around this. So while I was on vacation, I think I overlapped with another board member. I assumed then while we were out, board members were aware that he was one of them. Did he not bring this to you and say, "Hey, I've been invited to be a part of a panel. I would like to participate, and I'm going to use the name."
No. No, and I don't, and I don't, I just want to say that I don't like that. Either many of you think like, "Really, I knew that two of you are on vacation." So that.
I'm just saying I knew that two of us were, that two of us were overlapped.
I, I completely understand and.
I don't know who knew.
Did not know. And I appreciate what you're saying, and I agree with what you're saying. My question, I'm wondering, is if the votes who are putting this on, if they put the titles on there for all the votes who are involved.
If my name and I discovered, if you're on a panel, you don't know that your face and your name and your title is on it. If that's baby, believe, I will get corrected if I didn't get it approved. I'm just saying, I will get corrected. I'm going to say, I'm a licensed social worker. Oh, my agency and entity giving out advice. That, that is not how we do things. You do not do that. You do not do that. You wouldn't know that this is circulating if you're a part of a panel. I can't suspect that they would not know their faces is on the flyer going around or shared a copy to be able to spread to who they would like to encourage to come. You have to be aware that your name and title is used on something. Uh, going forward, discussions around the district's name being used, as soon as it comes to a board member's awareness, phone calls need to be happening. We, we need to be checking in, and I'm not gonna lie, no, I waited because this was a transparency that needed to happen tonight. And it needed to happen because I was flooded with so many, just as you all were, so many emails from the community. And I don't have a response to give, and we, we ain't bringing no sunshine law on this. We're discussing this right now. If you've seen my name written on the flyer, not on the panel, you will want answers from me. You will want me to have cleared that with you. So I'm just saying, I'm not trying to say, "Who knew?" I don't know who knew. I just, I was just trying to say, I knew of two of us at least being gone that may not have received the email until after a week later we returned. So in that timeframe, did anyone while we were out of the country gone have awareness that this flyer had came in?
No. When did, when did that flyer come out?
It said, oh, well, it hit our, our, our email boxes the day after my birthday. I won't forget that timestamp. It was all a shit. So, and, and for the most part, all of us board members, when we're on vacation, we leave an access to a number of how we can be reached. So if I need, if I ever need to be reached because I'm away, don't, this is, if this critical, call me. We don't, we don't need to be blindsided on topics like this. But we have to be mindful of that name and that logo being distributed on things and how it gets perceived about our district.
Thursday, July thirty-third.
And, and I understand where you're coming from. I do, I do. But there was no violated this contract. Seeing, I didn't, I didn't, I guess, I didn't say, "Oh, my gosh, he was up." I just looked at it as an opportunity, just like if it was a more democratic leaning. I'm glad. I'd be glad he's gone.
I, I understand. We gotta be mindful, support, nonpartisan. But let's, let's go that route while we're talking about it. If it's democratic or if it's a Republican panel or whatever, and we have, again, we had a discussion. Let's, 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 let's expand. Let's go explore each other's events. Let's, let's learn and see what we can do. Because you know me, I, before I was in this seat, and when I came in this seat, I preached unity. And how do we collaborate together? So, I could go with that as long as there is a discussion. So what we have to ensure we do is individuals that we hire, put on as a contract out the gate, we let them know upfront, you have to run a bias if you are going to use our name or as soon as you catch someone used the title of our district to your name. You have, it has to be. It has to be because represent all.
I think this is a great early on to me. Uh, we, this, um, summer, I know again, having Mr. Jordan here for the first time for a whole year and everything, kind of all the hiring and moving, you know, the negotiation dates and everything. Played a lot with the calendar this past summer, and there were a lot of dates that were moved and a lot of dates changed around. And it looks like, you know, there were a lot of things that were missed, and one of them, um, you know, state loan transportation and things were missed there. And it was like, this is another category where.
That sounds happening. Maybe we should have more meetings closer together, not go almost a month between meetings. Because there's a lot that should be discussed, so, um.
because there's a lot to be discussed, and so, um, you know, it's unfortunate things happen. But again, this is the first opportunity we've had in that discussion since it came out, so.
Take his name off, take his name off. Seriously, at this point, nobody that is, wants to take it off.
It's very unique, and I really appreciate that, that's something that I didn't, you know, discuss a lot.
And the school lawyer should sue, does not handle. We can hear you, there's nobody cares.
All right, thank you, you have one lovely.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this?
Not on this, I just had somebody else on the pad. Um, just a reminder, um, now that the school's starting back up, there are lots and lots and lots of calls here, opportunities in our buildings, um, and, um, we had several, um, principals and teachers reach out last year, you know, looking for folks to help. Um, so just a few things, um, crossing guards, book fairs, athletic boosters, band boosters, and the special teams, PTA, we have a great PTA program at Southwestern, and we're always looking, um, for families, um, to help out with that. And, um, wanted to mention that, um, Mr. Omar at Derbyburg Elementary School is partnering with Columbus Tutoring Institution. Um, this year, talk of after-school tutoring for those in need, um, those that need actual support in reading and writing. And, um, if you would be interested in serving as a tutor, please contact Mr. Omar. He is a person of wisdom. So please, 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 we love how you folks come and tell us all the wonderful things that are going on in the community and all of your thoughts and feelings. Um, but the best way to, um, help our students is to serve, uh, serve our students and serve our schools. So please get a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, Mr. David, is the phone number still active, right? From, um, a, 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 I think it's, I think it's, uh, break, please break the.
On the front page.
Okay, good, good. Definitely to, to call and have the kids call to, it's a reminder. Looking for students needing twenty-five, twenty-six school years.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson, roll call. Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Steve Lucio.
Yes.
Assistant.
Yes.
Martinale. Uh, yes, thank you, everybody, for being here.